October 24th, 2022, regular business meeting of Board of School Trustees held in public with start time at 6 o'clock this evening. May all rise. We're going to ask Mr. Angel to lead us in a pledge allegiance. We have Mr. Hoffman joining us through Zoom this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Angel. You may be seated. Item two, patrons' comments. We do not have anybody registered to comment this evening, so we could move right into the consent agenda. Dr. Terrell.
Thank you and good evening for your consideration this evening. We have our minutes from our regular board meeting, 3.2, the appointment of the Crown Point Library Board of Trustees, appointment of Lauren Zerbrigan. Did I get that right? How about that, first try? And that will be through December 31st, 2024, and Lauren is here with us, and we appreciate her coming by for that. And then 3.3, a recurrent grant for the alternative ed grant. 3.4 is another recurrent grant for Title IV, Part A, and that is our Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant. 3.5, our personnel agenda, and then 3.6, the voucher-registered checks as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. For direct recommendation, excuse me, for the consent agenda as presented, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Babjack. Any questions or comments for Dr. Terrell on the agenda? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Hoffman votes aye.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Opposed? The motion carries five zero. We have item four, action items. We have 4.1 to 2223 revision to the Crown Point High School textbook rental and supply fees. Mr. Gene Fermi.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members. On June 27th, the school board approved the 2223 Crown Point High School textbook rental fees. In reviewing the fees, there were five courses that needed adjustment, either due to data entry error or inventory of consumable resources that met the student enrollment, or the cost of the E-code increased. And we are asking the school board to approve the revisions to the 2223 Crown Point High School textbook rental supply fees.
Thank you, Mr. Gene Fermi, for the recommendation to approve the 2223 Crown Point High School textbook rental fee, rental and supply fee revision. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Angel, second by Mr. Smith. Have any comments from Mr. Gene Fermi? Questions?
Just notation since some of the people watching and attendance, largest increase looks like it's just over a little over $9.
Correct.
Nothing too out of line, so.
And in more cases than not, it actually decreased the fee.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Mr. Hoffman votes aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. 4.2, administrator computer update. Mr. Akewa.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members. Currently, we are in the process of replacing our administrative computers or laptops in this case. And like all of our technology, they have a targeted lifecycle where we just need to replace them after a given time. Currently, the admin computers have been around since 2018, and it's time to replace them. We've gone ahead and presented a choice of two different, one of two different machines, and the administrators have made their selection which fits their needs best. We've gone ahead and looked at, you know, a Dell Latitude, which is with a detachable keyboard, which is something I have, literally the keyboard tears off, if you will, and has a stylus, or just a flip-around hinge where your laptop turns into a tablet and it's all in one piece. Just depending on how you move around in the school and work in your classroom or go do observations, the admin feels confident on the machines that they've selected for their particular replacement. We've gone ahead and received quotes, and you've received the, that as an attachment for your review. The teacher machines, just as a note of information, have been around since 2019, and we're hoping, according to Brian, speaking with him earlier, we'd like to get those, keep those in play until around 2024 if we can. So we'll be looking at teacher replacement down the road. But currently, we're looking at the administrative laptop replacement. Get that back up here, for a total expenditure of $86,377.18. So recommendation this evening is for the board to approve the purchase of the new administrative computers.
Thank you, Mr. Akewa. Heard the recommendation to approve the purchase of these new administrative staff machines. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Mr. Babjack and second by Mr. Angel. Questions or comments from Mr. Akewa?
Total number then is 46 of those?
That is correct.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Mr. Hoffman votes aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Akewa. 4.3 is five-year agreement with Power School Group for a student information system. Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. In June of last year, we were notified that our student information system providers, RDS, would be going out of business effective May of 2024. At that point, we immediately jumped on the opportunity to issue an RFP. Small committee came together to review those responses. A larger group came together to go sit through a demonstration and also Q and A with Power School. In talking with other districts as references, we found Power School to have the best product that would best meet our needs for a new student information system. We believe the enhancements for registration specifically for our parents, but also for us, and making sure working with some really good data on a regular basis, Power School provides the best option for us at this point. So with that, they've also, part of their proposals waived the first-year fees and simply have a reduced cost for the training and ramp-up. The idea, we would go live with them. We normally do our rollover in July of 2023, and instead of doing the rollover, we'll go live with Power School as our student information system as we start the next school year. I think everybody who reviewed it, we're very excited about the opportunities that this new student information system provides us, and we're excited to move on from there. So with that, we're recommending the approval of the five-year agreement with Power School Group.
Thank you. Heard the recommendation to approve this five-year agreement with Power School Group. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Babjack. Questions, comments from Mr. Reese?
Only question I have is what school districts are currently using?
They currently have over 200 districts in the state of Indiana. It's a nationwide firm, but they do 200 districts in just our state, which is about 2/3.
And how long have we used RDS? I think since I've been on the board.
We've been with RDS for student information. I think we looked at it was around 40 years.
Forty?
Yes.
We're excited about the change.
Yeah. I'm sure some parents right now that have registered on RDS are clapping at home, so yes.
I agree, and thank you, are all involved for, you had this, sound like a deadline of May of 24, you said, but to jump and move quickly on it, makes everybody happier that much sooner, right? So thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Mr. Hoffman votes aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And 4.4 is the one-year extension of health access, health E-access clinic agreement. Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Your current agreement for a clinic through our health insurance ends December of 2022. You started that in December of 2020, so it was a two-year agreement. We're simply asking for an extension for a third year of that same agreement. Franciscan has agreed not to increase the cost. It's a percentage-based cost on amount of participation. We have seen some, quite a bit of increased participation this year. We're up almost 50% through September compared to what we had used the clinics for January through December. So we had about 600 visits last calendar year, and through September, we're up over 900. So we've had a nice increase in the usage of the clinic, which is good. The idea of using the clinic again is to reduce our costs from doctor visits and prescriptions, not to replace your, your primary care physician, but simply give you a quick urgent care, also prescription relief to reduce your cost and also the district's cost for health insurance. So with that, we're recommending an extension of the one-year for the healthy, healthy access program agreement with Franciscan.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. You've heard the recommendation to approve the amendment to the healthy access program agreement with Franciscan, working well. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Mr. Angel.
Second.
And second by Mr. Babjack. Questions or comments from Mr. Reese? Can you repeat the terms? You said 600 through an entire year, and then currently, when you're saying it, I was listening, I just hear the time.
Yeah, so the monthly visits in 2021 totaled 665. Now, this takes out our wellness visits.
For the entire year of 2020.
For the entire year. So 12 months, 665 visits. So far through 2022 through September, so only nine months worth, we're at 928, and that doesn't count the wellness visits we had February, March, where over 300 of our employees were able to attend, go get their wellness visits. So more and more usage this year, which is a big positive access.
To secure that at no additional cost is huge, because if nobody's noticed, we have a little bit of inflation problem going on, so to not consider that is a great thing, you know?
We would like to get those numbers even higher and pay them more money, with the idea being that that reduced our actual claim cost on our health insurance. So more people attending the clinic for those regular routine services is really what we're aiming for.
Any other questions or comments? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Mr. Hoffman votes aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Now, before we move to, we're going to move to 4.5, so everybody's aware. Mr. Hoffman, you know that with the Indiana code, you will not be allowed to participate on a budget vote remotely, so just as we move forward, you guys know where Tom would be excluded from this. 4.5 is to approve the 2023 budget forms and resolutions. Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We have three resolutions for tonight. Form 4 resolution establishes your appropriations for calendar year 2023 for what I'm going to call the governmental funds or education operations referendum operating, debt service, and rainy day. With that, you also have Resolution 818, which is to establish the 2023 capital projects plan, and also the Resolution 819, which is the bus replacement plan for 2023 as well. The public hearing for all three of these resolutions and the budgets was held on your regular board meeting in September 26th, at which we had no comment at that point regarding the budgets. There have been no change from that public hearing to the adopted budgets that are being presented tonight. So my recommendation, you approve Resolutions 817, 818, and 819, establishing your appropriations, levies, and tax rates for 2023, along with the 2023 capital projects plan and the 2023 bus replacement plan.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Further recommendation to approve the 23 budgets, the 23 capital projects plan, 23 bus replacement plan, and the corresponding forms and resolutions as they're presented. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Angel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. What questions or comments from Mr. Reese on the opposed budgets? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries four zero. Moving on to information items, we can start with superintendent discussion groups. Anyone that want to volunteer any information, either Cedar Lake, Winfield, Crown Point. Mr. Smith, anything to Cedar Lake?
The only thing I saw that, from Cedar Lake that came out is they're tending on dredging the lake, I think, right after July 4th of next year, which would be a great thing for the community. I believe that's starting, so that's kind of, going to be an interesting time out there in Cedar Lake. And other than that, nothing that would impact our schools in any way.
Not that you guys would know off the top of your head, but how often might that happen? Anybody know?
Well, I think it's been a long while.
Over 20 years.
They're excited about it.
I feel like I remember hearing something about that back in the 90s. I just think, yeah, yeah. Okay. Mr. Hoffman, anything you'd like to share from?
I really don't have anything to report as far as recent decisions by either Winfield or Crown Point, but due to my impending retirement from the board, we will have to coordinate replacements for both the Crown Point and the Winfield redevelopment commissions.
Kind of, for anybody that couldn't hear that, Mr. Hoffman offered that with his retirement from the board, we'll be looking to replace the redevelopment commissions for Winfield and the city of Crown Point. Good. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Let's move to.
Dave, do we know if that, wow. That was very loud. Do we know if that will be, will we be able to appoint that person, or will that be appointed by the city?
Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, that position was appointed by the city, correct?
Yes. By statute, it's the legislative body who makes the appointment. Previously, the town council in Winfield made the appointment, and the mayor made the appointment in Crown Point.
Tom, is it correct that we, you, the board, makes the recommendation to them, and then they make the appointment?
Well, that wasn't necessarily the case before.
Okay.
There was a legislative effort probably two, three years ago to try to change that so school boards could appoint their own.
And also to make it so they could vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think that went through.
Yeah. I would think with the relationship we have with both of them that.
They would hopefully honor a recommendation.
If we make a recommendation, they'll support that as well, so. Yep. We can work through that, and Tom, before you retire, that may be.
I can advise you that I was not the recommendation to the city of Crown Point redevelopment commission.
And that's probably a conversation for a later time. But Tom, before you leave, one of the things we'll ask you to do is to help us with that transition and working through that process.
I have had preliminary discussions with the mayor of Crown Point. I've not had any conversations with anybody at Winfield.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Elementary Education, Mr., excuse me, Director of Elementary Education, Mr. Mears?
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank our teachers. We have a very busy week this week with parent-teacher conferences coming up, and this is really an invaluable time for us to partner with our families, and so we thank our families as well for making the time to either come in or to Zoom or phone call so that we can share strengths of the students as well as then opportunities for growth. We really are appreciative of what success we've had with parent conferences in the past and our teachers' time as well as our families, so we're very appreciative of that. As well as then, another exciting thing happening in the elementary world is Red Ribbon Week, and really, again, supporting and highlighting the importance of being drug-free as well as bully-free, and our schools do a really great job of emphasizing the importance of both of those for our students to be healthy and safe at school. Any questions?
If there's any chance, could we get like a general idea of percentage of attendees from parental involvement on those?
Yes, I have requested, and so once the parent conferences occur, which will happen this week as well as next week, they will share that information with me so I can have it for you at the next either meeting or share it with you via email.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
The light bulb just went off there. It's something I've been meaning to ask. It's come to us through an email a few times, speaking of percentages. Are the elementaries right now posting a absentee percentage on a weekly basis? Is there something that's out there available to the public or that's shared with you guys? Or some maybe, might be doing it and might not be?
I have seen one school that has been acknowledging a class that has the best attendance, and I've seen that posted on social media. I have not seen specific rates. It's just generally a picture of the class, and I think that they get kind of that recognition. I don't know if that's maybe what you're referring to.
No, I'll actually, I'll actually say here, shame on me. I think it came, as soon as you said that, it triggered a thought. I think the question came either to me or the entire board in the beginning of the school year. It was a question or a request why we may or may not issue attendance rates. I think it came from the concern of, you know, rising sickness and potentially wanting to keep a child out of school if they were concerned. So I don't know how available those rates may be, or if it's something, this, for now, this isn't, you know, what I've shared is probably enough for you to go back and, you know, consider what they may be looking for, but I'm sorry, I should have asked that a couple months ago.
Yeah, if there's a specific that they're looking for, I have not seen any type of numeric attendance rate being publicized, simply a best attendance in the school, and that class being highlighted.
The one issue that we do have is if our attendance rate drops above 20% being absent, then we have to contact the health board and work through them if there's some kind of illness that is going on. But other than that, there really isn't any other requirement, anything that, you know, we haven't talked through that you guys would like to see.
I don't know if maybe I, if maybe I've seen it as a parent in the past somewhere that, you know, the attendance rate is currently 96%, and yeah, so Mr. Akewa's not in his head. I, you know, and I don't know whether it's 98 or 96, I don't know how valuable that may be or how readily that is to share, but just something worth.
No, thank you for that feedback.
Do you have something, Marty?
I'm just going to say that it used to be a metric for like awards and recognition in the state, and it's just not, it's just not a metric anymore.
It's more shared for the acknowledgement of good attendance for being involved.
Correct.
Okay. Well, if anyone's listening that sent that email, I apologize, I should have asked that a couple months ago. Moving forward to Director of Secondary Education, Mr. Gene Fermi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item to share. On September 28th and 29th, I had the opportunity to attend the ICASE Fall Conference, which is the Indiana Council of Administrators of Special Education. Not a conference I generally attend, but I did attend with some colleagues, our Director of Exceptional Ed, Heather Paskas, our Assistant Director, Kelly Oost of Exceptional Ed, and then our Principal at Colonel Wheeler, and we actually were presenters there as well. We presented on the progress that Colonel Wheeler Middle School has made in including their applied skills students into the general classroom, and I just, the hard work that's happening at that middle school from the staff, teachers, the kids, and parents, everyone involved, it's really taken some really big steps forward, and I was just kind of proud to be part of that team. It was also great to see our Directors of Exceptional Ed, how well-respected they are, not only in our community, but amongst other corporations. And the presentation went really well. We had really great positive feedback, and like anytime you go to a conference like that, you start to get a lot of other ideas from other corporations as people stand and stay after and talk to you. So it was just a great experience, and we're in our first steps working over there at Colonel Wheeler on this, but it's really coming along, so it was a good process, and I really thank them for all their hard work as well. And that is really.
I might mention with that, the individuals who did our audit, our exceptional ed audit were there.
Oh, yeah.
And were amazed, I think is an accurate word, of how far we've come in the last couple of years with exceptional ed, so thank you, Heather and Kelly and everyone for their work in that area.
Thank you. Director of Exceptional Education, Ms. Paskas.
Good evening, Mr. Warren, members of the board. Mr. Gene Fermi left out. We're doing the same presentation for the Indiana High School Principals Association Conference next month, so excited to present it in front of a general education audience. I wanted to recognize some community partnerships that we have built and are growing. Our students in high school and our 18- to 22-year-old students who don't earn a diploma but are getting a certificate of completion, we are charged with helping them build vocational skills, because that's really our goal for gainful employment when they leave us. And the YMCA last year, really, Marissa Dobstat is our transition coordinator and has worked with them on building quite a partnership, where kids even worked there over the summer. And then Centier Bank is actually having a representative co-teach with her at the high school personal finance for some of our students, which is a great new program. And then we have two new businesses, Jill Sossimos and Station 21, who have been willing to take on working with some of our students and helping them get those job skills, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Paskas. Chuf, chuf. I've done that a few times. Chief Human Resource Officer, Mr. Akewa.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. Two items to highlight today. One is very exciting, a long time coming. We've received our first one of two activity buses. Activity buses meaning decorated bus with a logo on it, it's white and red, right? And it's, it just came in this week, today?
I think it came in Friday or last week.
Late, later last week, yeah.
Yeah.
But Dr. Terrell, a chance to go out there and check it out and take some pictures, but long time coming for this, with supply chain issues, and getting outfitted and decorated and, you know, all the different things added on to it from the actual manufacturer. We're just so excited to have this thing here, and we've actually gained possession of it. So number two is coming very soon as well, so we'll have two activity buses. So hopefully you'll see in some of our activities and our trips, a sporty, new, sharp Crown Point Community School Corporation bus taking our students to different events. So just want to congratulate everybody there, especially, you know, Monica over in Transportation and all that have supported the effort to get these, you know, onboard and operating, so be on the lookout for those. The second one is more to my right here, Brooke Allen. Want to go ahead and congratulate her on getting Parent Square, which is a mass communication module up and running, and she's worked very hard at this, and it's, it's not been an easy lift transitioning from what we use School Messenger now into this new upgraded messaging platform. We actually had our first test message right before fall break, and maybe she'll talk about that here in a little bit. So I knew I was going to steal your thunder a little bit, but I just wanted to shine a little spotlight on her. So if you haven't noticed, the improvements in our comms, our communication across the corporation, that's with branding, you know, how we push information out. Just want to thank Brooke for all that she's done to really step up our game in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Akewa. 5.6, the business office, Mr. Reese.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving quickly to Director of Communications, Ms. Allen.
Thank you. Mr. Akewa did steal my thunder a little bit, but I need to thank Chris Phillips from our IT department who helped iron out the last hiccup in this Parent Square transition, and that is making sure our teachers can now use the platform as well. So eventually, we'll be able to replace Dojo and Remind and all of those many apps that I think teachers are having to use or even pay for themselves. And so Parent Square will alleviate a lot of those issues, and I'm looking forward to that. Hopefully, next semester, we'll offer it as an option to teachers who are ready to go ahead and jump onboard, and then eventually, it'll be a requirement. So yeah, thank you to Chris.
Brooke, before we leave you, could you also give the board an update on the school board candidates page that's coming to our website?
Sure, yes. We received quite a few phone calls and emails over the past couple of weeks regarding school board candidates and where folks can go to find more information. There was not one centralized location for that, so we developed a short questionnaire and distributed that to all of the candidates, and it was on our website. It was released on our website this afternoon. So if you go to the main page of our website, there's a little pop-up that will take you right to the questionnaire. You can read everyone's responses in one place.
Thank you. Dr. Terrell?
So a few things I want to bring to your attention. Really excited, had this idea a while ago, and tomorrow, we're actually going to see it come to fruition, and that is with our faith response team. So we have a group of 12 individuals here in our community across all the different religious groups that might be here that are going to come together tomorrow and go through a half-day of training from our end about our safety and security plans, but then also to get input from different providers that we work with. So in the event that there's a tragedy or some other weather-related event, anything that would come up where we could use a set of extra hands in our buildings to help us, they're going to go through that training, and then we'll be ready to start responding
they're gonna go through that training and then we'll be ready to start responding as needed. That'll be something that we will use, that I will use on a, on a case-by-case basis to say, well, maybe it's two this time, maybe it's five, maybe we need all 12 depending on what the situation is. So really pleased and excited about that and looking forward to partnering even further. Many of these individuals represent organizations or churches who currently have relationships with our schools and partnerships with our schools already. So really excited about that. Heard a lot of great things about people enjoying fall break, coming back looking a little bit more tan, a lot more rested and relaxed and talking with some of our teachers. Trust you guys and had a great fall break as well. In your emails this evening, sent you an update, the latest update on our construction projects. Excited to tell you, we have now added Eisenhower to the mix and that has, the construction process has begun there as well. So it's just going everywhere right now and really doing well though with it. Supply lines continue to not be an issue. We continue to be where we need to be there. Deion and Skillman is doing a great job with that as well. Tonight was mentioned a couple of different things about presentations. We're really trying to make a, and put an emphasis on our people sharing what's happening here. We feel like we're a leader in the state and we want to make sure that we're getting out the things that we're doing here. We've had two different presentations at IASBA, which is the finance portion of our state organizations. Already presented there with our new teacher orientation process. Mike Malaski also presented there, similar topic as well. And then you heard about the ICASE and then that'll also be done at the Principals Association. And then you guys were able to attend the school board and Superintendent's Association presentation that Brooke, I was there, but Brooke was the one that took over and really did a great job with that. So I appreciate the extra time that it takes for our people to get out there and do that, but it's a great growing opportunity for us as well to hear responses and ways that we can improve, ways that we get ideas from other people of how we can even make changes and make that the best that it can be. So thank you to all of you in here that are doing that and we appreciate it and continue to look for ways to reach out and get the word out there about Crown Point throughout our state.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. How about other, other business of the board? Anybody have anything like to talk about this evening?
I know we have the regional dinner coming up, right Diana?
Third, November 3rd.
I don't forget that one, you was saying.
Anything else, anybody? I'm sure, I want to piggyback the compliment to Brooke for, you know, we were personally able to attend Indiana School Board Conference and I mentioned this, I believe at one of our coffee talks and it already feels like it was so long ago now, it was only three weeks ago or something like that. But attending those for quite a while and seeing a, usually the rooms are 40, 50% full and I would say you probably had a 78, you know, maybe a 70, 70, 80% attendance. And I really think that, I've never seen the crowd so drawn to what was being said. You delivered excellent. You made Crown Point look unbelievable. I mean, all the districts were, how are you guys doing this? She's amazing. Three people tried to offer a job before we walked out of the room, maybe five, I don't know. But to go so far so fast with, one, and here my highlight to the whole, what we listened to. I'm sure Scott, you could probably name a few too. But when she showed a news bullet, a newsletter, there was nothing but words of accomplishments verse five pictures of kids achieving those accomplishments. It was like, it was amazing. It was in a way, it was a bit embarrassing as to what you were showing, what it was to what it is now. But thank you so much for that whole thing. And, you know, saying that to you because we were able to be there in person, but Mr. Kewa, Mr. Gene Fermi, everyone is like, like Dr. Terrell said, going around and sharing what we're doing and picking up things along the way is really appreciated, I think, from all those board members.
So you guys know we've added a non-compete clause to Brooke's contract. So she's here.
I also think it's worth, I also think it's worth mentioning that more than a few times recently, you hear the compliments to Mr. Coulson and the continuous aware and improvements in safety and security. You know, one came up, it was just, it was sent to me personally. It wasn't like really a board thing, but it was, hey, there's a child that was planning on getting in a fight and getting picked on and they had an arrangement or whatever it may be and, you know, the old here's, I shouldn't say the old, but they see something, say something and, you know, word travels. And I believe there is a bit of a opportunity to make somebody feel a bit better or avoid a bad situation. But I don't think it's just that. I think it's happening, you know, all the time. So again, thank you for keeping up that progress and everyone's pretty, that, another mess was just, pretty much with things going on in the world, it's never, it doesn't seem to be ever getting easier for public education and safety. And it was being shared with me that, you know, someone, they attended, I'm saying a lot of someone's coming, being indirect in naming who these individuals may be, but they attended their own safety seminars and it was kind of like a check, we're doing that, check, we're doing that, check, we're doing that. It's just, you know, could always, could never not do enough, but I think it's really important to hear some track, tracking and compliments coming to share with you. So thank you. And then I could probably save this for the statements of appreciation, but gosh, the other one I had was that the achievements of the touchdown club and what they're providing some of this stuff for the, for the, for the football team. And I think it, one of the reasons to mention it is that they're providing, that's that org, that's that group, those parents providing for those kids. So a lot of people get a misconception that, oh, they, you know, the school's buying this or buying that or, you know, for, but, I mean, gosh, when they, when they go out there and doing the work to raise it, good for them and hope they continue their success. So, all right, so that was kind of like a appreciation to mention. But any other business? Mr. Hoffman, you have anything to share for other business of the board?
He said thumbs up, he's good.
Okay. Well, if something comes up too, we can move forward to statements of appreciation and still mix it in there if you want, or Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just, just going back to the business of the board, I think David and I had the opportunity to go around to, I think we've hit four schools now and really it's a, it's a great experience just to get to talk to the building leaders, see what's going on in the schools and hopefully we weren't too disruptive, but it's really nice to catch up. One of the things that became clear, going back to Officer Coulson, is just the, how much the communication has improved between the schools and then along with the police departments for each, each area or even the county. And that was just echoed constantly. I mean, it seemed like that was a big issue that was resolved recently. But I just want to commend, as we walk through the schools, you know, the creativity that the staffs had because there's, I mean, it's, it's amazing how they maximize space to continue to function. I mean, I had no idea. I was just blown away. So to the building leaders, the teachers and the students who have adjusted and they, they're not missing a beat. And it's, it's just astonishing because there's things going on all around and they got wooden hallways and, you know, office spaces become classrooms or classrooms become offices. And it's just amazing to see that the operations have continued. And so I think for all those schools that have had to make those adjustments and accommodations, I just want to commend them and say, well done, because it's, it's not easy and, but they've done a great job of adjusting, so.
Any other, other business? If not, we'll move to board statements of appreciation and recognition. We can start down, back, back to you, Mr. Smith, if you have anything to add. Mr. Babjack?
I'll echo Todd's comment about fall break. I mean, I heard personally from a lot of people that really appreciated the time off, ran into families at the airports that were going on vacation and saw a lot of stuff on social media about, that looked like people had a really good time with that week off for fall break. So no, I think that was, I think that's well, you know, hopefully the teachers are well-rusted. A lot of them are coming back to parent-teacher conferences this week. So I know I have one scheduled myself and a teacher probably needs some time to prepare for it. So hopefully they're relaxed and ready to go.
Mr. Angel?
I'd say that's great, but when now you have a teacher in your family and he lives in your house and now he's home for a week? I don't know if those circumstances are the greatest, but we're all good with that moving forward. But I had to mention that as not used to having the working new teacher home for a whole week and really nothing to do other than look ahead. So I was gonna mention something about Brooke as far as, I've attended that ISBA conference now for 17 years and I've been in a lot of them to where you have a tendency late in the afternoon to doze off. So I just want to say kudos because it was done in a way to where she presented it to where you can understand it from a board member's perspective. Now, what a lot of people don't realize is us board members, none of us usually grew up with an education background. I had a dad that was a teacher, brother that was a teacher, all that aspect of it. So you have to put it in layman's terms to how a board member's gonna accept it of being inside a school corporation because it runs differently than all the businesses that we kind of do as individuals. And it was very like pointed to where, kudos to the one point, that's all I'm gonna say, is to where she literally said, there's a method so-called of the madness to where when you have something you have to put out there, you have to have a plan of what needs to be put out and how it needs to be put out in a format to where you're making yourself look good if it's something good. And yet if it's something that needs to be brought out to all you parents, it needs to be put and presented as soon as possible and in a way that you understand that nothing might be earth-shattering, but you need to be aware of this. So great job on that is, once again, I've attended a lot of those things and it was well put together and well presented, which I think is the real key. So kudos to Brooke on that. And if you others presenting, Ms. Paskas, Mr. Gene Fermi, moving forward, Mr. Kewa, if there's any way to get a copy of that or a so-called videotape of it, we'd love to see that as well so we could not be able to attend, can at least say, you know, job well done because we do have a lot of good things here at Crown Point and the fact that we're willing to share that with the state, with other schools. It should be because people are trying to copy us in certain ways, certain forms, so why not share that? So, and then the only other appreciation is to all our athletic teams. I don't want to leave anybody out, whether it be our cross-country teams, both qualifying for sectionals. The girls' team now qualifying for state, the football team undefeated, the volleyball team making it to regionals, soccer team making it to semi-state. I mean, just outstanding, the boys tennis winning sectionals. Just, I mean, if you think about that, it goes on and on and on and it's pretty incredible that we're in that standard here at Crown Point to where, you know, kind of just goes unnoticed when you win a sectional crown, which that shouldn't happen for those individuals participating. Someone says, oh, it's almost expected. Well, everything's not always, you know, rosy at the top and you can't continue to do it for the years we continue to do it as a community. So congratulations to all those players, the coaches, parents supporting their, their kids in those endeavors because it's not ever easy following those to each and every event to make sure you're there for your kid. So that's all I have this evening.
Mr. Hoffman, did you have any board statements of appreciation or recognition?
At, at the presidency of Brooke demanding a pay raise, I too would like to commend her and I think one of the highest compliments that was probably paid as far as that presentation was when Terry Spradlin, head of the Indiana School Boards Association, came over to Dr. Terrell and he says, I gave her a job offer. That's the conclusion of her presentation. Like, like Scott, I've been attending these things for many years and it's difficult to try and find sessions to attend where you think you're going to learn something. Based upon my years on the school board, my years on the Board of Directors of the Indiana School Boards Association, I can confidently say that Crown Point Community School Corporation is ahead of the curve. We are one of the finest school corporations north of Indianapolis and I serve on a board with representatives from Avon, Center Grove, Zionsville, Carmel, Hamilton Southeastern, Yorktown, some of the finest school corporations in the state. And they look to us from time to time for, for ideas on what to do. So I, I think that's a great compliment to the school corporation. You know, we, we need to keep up the good work, but you guys sitting there that normally are sitting beside me, that are on my screen deserve a lot of credit for what's happening here as do Dr. Terrell and our entire administrative team, our, our teachers and our staff.
Thank you, Tom. One last lap round, anybody? I do not have, I think it was all covered, anything to write down myself after all of that. One, one last lap, any, any last thoughts before we look for motion to adjourn?
I forgot one thing, David.
Yes?
Mr. Babjack was talking about fall break. I've had an excellent fall break, so I just want to throw that in.
When did yours start?
Mine hasn't ended.
Right, right. Okay, we're all finished up. Promotion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Angel and seconded by Mr. Babjack. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Mr. Hoffman is aye.
Opposed? Post carries five zero.